The workshop for regarding our insurance is now in session. What I'm gonna do is just ask us, just to have a moment of silence and then we'll move into the meeting and you can take over, Ms. Burnett, a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, board. Andy Burnett, committee chair for the insurance committee. Really excited and happy to be bringing you a workshop for a recommendation for our health clinic. I know we've talked about that for a long time. The one our committee chose was Marathon. This will be on Tuesday's board meetings agenda as an emergency item. I know that's kind of a short turnaround, but our goal is to have our clinic up and running by January of 2025 and that would need six months to get everything fleshed out. So that's why we're bringing it to you as an emergency item. I wanted to thank the members of my committee. A lot of work we put into this. We're not insurance specialists. We do our regular jobs and we come in and we listen to everything that's presented to us, but Thomas Bowling, Diana Drew, Jonathan Odom, Anne Rhonda Odom, Mark Modle, Paul Smith, Michael Greenan, Tammy Heath, those are the members of the committee. We have several other people that assist us, Tammy Collins, Sandra Redman, Linda Wagner, and Bateson Hewitt. So I just want to say thank you for all of those. We did a lot of work. And the process, just to remind you, we have eight committee members by contract, four from administration and four from the union side. We develop a recommendation for you by consensus and bring it to you and then it's your job either to approve or deny that. Just a little background, our journey so far. 2023, we went with all HSA plans. 2024, this year, we went self-insured, a big step for us. Recently, we've approved Truvaris to look at all of our prescription claims and how we can better kind of look at the money that we spend on those. And then now we've got to this clinic proposal, which we've been working on for a long time. Why Marathon? We considered four possible providers, Marathon being one, People One being another one, Medical Express, which is a local company being one, and then the Aswanee hybrid model. Our determining factors for choosing Marathon, long-term cost savings. We want this, the clinic, to be a long-term benefit for our employees, not something five years. But I retire in nine, so I want it to be going really good and strong so I can use it then. And then for all the other, my family members that work for the system and all the people I know, we want it to be something long-term. Data monitoring, Marathon, we'll get more into that, but that's one of the big things that I like, especially as a ESC director. I love looking at student data when we try to make decisions for IAPs. Same thing with this. Specifically, what do our employees need when they come in? What have they told us they need? Do we need to change the hours? Do we need to modify services? Do we need to add some things? Do we need to take some stuff away? All of that's important and we wanted it to be just our employees that we looked at when we made those determinations. Because some of, you know, we have a lot of female employees that work for us as teachers, so there's a lot of considerations that we have to look at specific to our population. So that was a big thing. Marathon serves other Florida school districts. I might get the number wrong, but it's, I think it's 13. They serve St. John's, have just added on Flagler, I think Escambia, but I could have Escambia wrong, but serve about 13 districts in Florida. That was a big thing to us as well. They have experience dealing with school districts in Florida. One of the big things that was important to me was Doug Sumner as their vice president. I cut my teeth as administrator with Suzanne Mathy out of Iron Larkin High and she, one of her big educational people that she admired was Bill Daggett. He always talked about relationships. So Doug is the vice president, but he was also in Kansas. He was a teacher, building administrator and superintendent and they had Marathon in their district. So to hear that come from somebody who I knew, even though we've served in different states, we had some of the same experiences, I'm sure, was a big, big deal to me and this clinic that we would use with Marathon would be on our property. We will be able to control access to it, control the hours, and that was something that was extremely important to us as well. It's also part of the district strategic plan, our premier workforce, to support employee overall health and wellness. This will definitely satisfy that. And then to recruit and retain our workforce. We're, you know, the shortage of teachers right now, you may have heard. And we're in competition with the districts all around us to get the best possible talent because it's the most important thing is our people in the classrooms that are impacting our kids on a daily basis. So we want to make sure that we attract the best possible people we can. Something I want you to think about too, as we go through this, is all clinics are built. Every one we went to and visited, they started off small and they added on, added on. You're not going to see the perfect clinic model just pop out of the sky and land day one and everything going smoothly. We know there's going to be things we'll need to work through. We need to look at data, like I said, to make sure we're making the best possible decision. So don't expect perfection on the first day. And like I said, we use our data to drive any change that we need. Whatever model we choose, even if it isn't this one that we go with, there's going to be a lot of employee education that goes along with that. This is going to be a big mind shift change for our employees, so it's something we'll have to educate them on. I want to thank you for your patience first. I know some of y'all have been waiting for this for a while, but we wanted to make sure that we exhausted everything and we brought you what we thought was the best thing. For our employees, I'll leave you a little quote. I was taught I can't put quotes on my emails anymore, so I'll give you a quote up here. I'll just have to start saying them. But it's one of my favorite presidents, President Eisenhower. He was in charge of a little plan when he was a general, but anyway, I always said plans are worthless, but planning is everything. So I think we've got you a good plan. I know once we hit the ground running, you know, there's going to be a lot of stuff that we're going to have to change and tweak, which is why we like going with Marathon. It's going to be our data that we go over every month and like I said, we can make changes that are specific to our employee needs. So, and leave here with no questions. I mean, if we don't have the answers for you, we'll get them. I can be here until nine o'clock tonight. After about that time, I start shutting down. But, so, we can be here and answer all your questions. So Marathon.
Andy, did you mention that, maybe you did and I missed it, but we are going to have this on as an emergency item?
Yes, sir, on Tuesday's meeting. And like I said, the biggest thing is we want them to be able to go ahead and start planning. They'll need six months and we want to start this January of 2025. I think it'd be a great place to start. We'll have had a year looking at all our claims as a self-funded district that lets us know more about where the insurance fund stands money-wise, so it's a big, I think it's a big important date.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. I'll quickly pull up Shannon if I can, so she can also introduce herself real quick. She unfortunately is feeling a little under the weather, so usually she could be here with us, but my name is Sarah Van Kampen. I have the pleasure of serving as Marathon Health Director of Growth here in the Southeast. So hi, I hail from Atlanta, Georgia, but have the pleasure of being able to come down to Florida and throughout the Southeast to meet with individuals like you and share the good word of what Marathon Health is looking to do and who we're looking to partner with. I'm really excited and happy to be here today and hope, as Andy said, I can answer all of your questions, but I commit to not making anything up. So if there's anything that I can't get, we'll make sure to get it back to you as a follow-up as well. Shannon, if you want to quickly introduce yourself as well?
Sure. I hope everyone can hear me. I'm Shannon Bateson. I'm the vice president of sales. I'm located right here in Florida, just a hop, skip and jump down the road from you all down to Seminole County, Florida. And I have the pleasure to get to work with you all and Sarah, and I apologize I'm not there in person today, but I don't want to bring any viruses anywhere. So I have the grace for the opportunity to be here virtually.
Thanks, Shannon.
Are you okay? Everything good?
All right. Shannon, I'm going to have you minimize, so if at any point, just stop me and jump in, we can hear you here. So let me pull this back up. I prepared a handful of slides that I thought would be helpful for us to go through, but ultimately, at the end of the day, this is for you all, for whatever questions you may have. So stop me at any point, anything I miss, just let me know along the way that I don't want it to feel like I'm talking at you or anything like that. So real quick, so Shannon and I introduced ourselves and I know Andy mentioned Doug Sumner. Doug had a death in the family, so he was unable to join us today. But Doug is a really key component of our strategy with school districts across the country. He, like Andy said, was a superintendent and a school administrator, a teacher himself, and he leads alongside all of our school district clients across the country, kind of strategic vision and growth. He's someone that would stay around with you all as it moves from our team into our account management team, but Doug will stay around to make sure both today, tomorrow, and into the future, the goals continue to be met and the growth is there. We're not perfect. We try to be as close to it as possible, but you know, Doug and the team will be there to help rectify should anything happen, to make sure we're growing together and doing our jobs. So Doug will be around, you will see him, and he is, you know, just an awesome guy that helps us continue to keep school districts at the top of our minds. I wanted to just kind of briefly start with a little bit about Marathon Health and kind of how we anchor ourselves as an organization. We were founded back in 2001 with these employer-sponsored healthcare clinics at the core of our business. We are only partnering directly with employers. We do not see commercially insured patients off the street. This is a one-to-one relationship with the employers that we partner with. And our goal is really to just disrupt and change the healthcare system. It's likely not a surprise to anyone in this room. Unfortunately, in our country, we have some challenges with our healthcare system and the way in which it's set up. And so our founder, Jeff Wells, started the business with the intention to just kind of flip the script and try and provide patients with really high-quality care at a cost that is much more effective for them. And so we view every single patient interaction as a chance to do just that. We want our providers to be able to spend really meaningful time with each patient. If anyone has been to an appointment in the community, often you have a few minutes with the provider, no fault of that specific individual, doctor, nurse practitioner, or whatever it may be. It's just the way things are set up and we want to make sure this becomes more relationship-based care and we can really get to know the patient and treat the whole person. When someone has diabetes, there's often a few more things going on that contribute to that diabetes, depression, anxiety, all sorts of things that are going on that contribute to that overall care. How can we treat that patient holistically and really help them get on the right track on a long-term basis for their overall health? So that's how we approach, you know, each patient that walks in the door and really looking to make a meaningful impact on those. As a business, we really value four key pillars as success and it's how we would bring data to your team, how we would continue to report and say, here's how the program is doing as a whole. Are the patients using it? This is not a build-it-and-they-will-come sort of strategy and we're not just putting an acute care center on a corner of town. We are building something that we take a lot of meaningful impact of getting patients in the door. You know, you're making an investment in Marathon Health and we take that incredibly seriously. So how do we drive really, really high levels of engagement to make sure we can see those results? And so we have a built-in team that's reaching out to your patients, communicating to them so that they're coming in the door and know that Marathon Health is their first stop. We want to be preventive care-based, but ultimately, we want to be there for each patient when the need comes. So whether that be same day, they wake up with a sore throat, their kiddo gets a scrape on the arm, whatever that may be, we want to be there for those patients to drive that level of engagement. We firmly believe once we get someone in the door once, we'll be able to get them back in. You know, I think the stat is somewhere around 2.3 visits per patient per year, once we get them engaged. I don't know about you guys, but I typically don't choose to go back more than once if I don't have to. And so that's a really meaningful stat that we're tracking really closely is when an additional need arises, is Marathon Health their first choice to come in as well? Secondly is, are they having a good experience? So, you know, we can't just get them in the door and have them come in. Are we delivering those really high levels of care and making sure that they would recommend it to a friend? Third is, are we improving their health? Of course, we want them to come in, of course, we want them to have a good experience, but are we able to really drive those levels of health improvement? Are people's A1Cs coming down? Are we getting more compliance on required screenings like colonoscopies and mammograms that individuals often miss? And so we're tracking that on a regular basis and reporting that back out. And then lastly, are we saving you money? This, like I said, this is an investment and we want to be really responsible stewards of your dollars. And so how are we saving both the district and the patient money on both ends and showing that return both in a short term and a long-term basis? Questions so far?
My foot appeared so far.
Okay. I wanted to just quickly kind of pause from our conversations with Andy and Thomas and the team throughout the summer and into the spring that we had the chance to meet with them and the entire insurance committee. We felt like we heard a few key pieces that we wanted to make really intentional as we went throughout this proposal process. First of all is really providing access to high-quality care. You know, you could put any provider in, in this clinic and they could provide access, but really high-quality care so that we're making, like I said, those improvements and having this really great patient experience. Second is retention, attraction and retention. We heard loud and clear that bringing a benefit that's really valued for your staff, your teachers, your administrators, everyone involved was important. And that's something that, you know, we hear time and time again from our employers across the country. One kind of anecdote that I'll share is we had a client up in Indianapolis that went bankrupt. They were a big box distributor. We had had an onsite clinic with them for a few years and, you know, their employees lost this benefit when they lost their jobs. And we had quite a few that called us on the phone and said, hey, do you have a client list that I could reach out to and see if they have job openings? Because I don't want to lose this benefit and I want to have someone that's utilizing Marathon Health. And I think that really speaks volumes to just, when someone becomes ingrained in this benefit, it's something that they really value and it becomes an important part of their overall benefit offering from their employer. And then lastly, like I said, cost savings. I know we've talked about this, but really making sure that we're partnering to build a solution that drives those. Like Andy said, we could build this huge proposal with all these services right off the bat, but how do we really responsibly act and build something that could build today, grow tomorrow, and 10 years from now, you know, continue to align and grow with your goals? And that's what we've done along this process is to try and build something that we see will be highly successful both at the beginning and into the future. This kind of quickly covers our experience in Florida as well as with school district clients. You'll see, you know, we cover most areas generally of the state, both with private and public sector employers. And then at the bottom, we have a few of our school district clients across the country. You know, we utilize these groups to learn and grow from each other. Like I said, we're not perfect, but we try not to make the same mistake twice. And especially when we have a subset of group that, you know, are in the same business, potentially seeing the same challenges, how can we grow and learn together? And so, you know, that's where Doug comes in, that's where our client team comes in, bringing groups together. Each year, we do a client forum where we bring our clients who are available together to be able to grow and learn. And we want to be able to ask questions to each other to see what's working one place and not the other, and we can implement kind of those learnings together. Shannon and her team are meeting with school districts across the state of Florida. It's definitely something we're seeing highly invested in throughout the state and so we're really excited to be here and be able to share this with you as well. This slide goes into really the scope of services that would be offered within the health center. As you see that kind of circle on the right, that is that core set that would be within the Putnam Health Center off the bat. Those green areas are our core kind of bread and butter services that we are delivering day in and day out across the country in all of our health centers. Primary care, preventive care, acute care is really the basis in what we were built in, chronic disease management. And so those are the core set of services that will be in there. Now, we like to say it's primary care plus because we ask our providers to practice to the top of their licensure, to be able to provide really deep care. So some simple things that you may have to go outside of your primary care physician today, we look to provide within the health center and control that referral. So as an example, small skin tag renewals, or removals, small suturing, things like that, that often you'd have to go to a dermatologist or, you know, acute kind of urgent care setting to get. We can control that within our health center and be able to provide those as well. Condition management is really important. Once we identify patients have a condition, how do we coach them throughout that process and help them get on kind of that path of improvement? Obviously, medication is involved, but how can we continue to help them that maybe medication someday is not required and get them kind of on that track that they feel really confident and comfortable in their health? We do onsite labs, which, you know, may seem like a small thing, but I don't know if you've been to a LabCorp or a Quest or any of those recently. You know, it can be not the best experience and also costs both the patient and the health plan quite a bit of money. And so we provide those within the health center at the cost we directly contract with them. We're usually seeing savings around 70% on each lab compared to what you would see in the community. And we can also do outside provider labs. So let's say I have, Andy's my doctor in the community, he says you need to go get a lipid panel. Instead of going to someone and having that cost come back to him, he could bring it to the Marathon Health Center and we could draw that blood and get that, no cost to the patient and a very small cost to the district itself. So that is an onsite service that will continue to be offered. And then dispensing as well. We do a subset, different than a pharmacy, so a prepackaged dispensary onsite with a, you know, call it 120 to 150 medications that we carry onsite, maintenance drugs, chronic conditions, some acute medications, you know, not those real high-cost cancer drugs or anything like that, but it gives the patient the ability to walk out the door with that med that they would need. It leads to higher compliance, gives them a reason to come in the door and kind of has that first touch point. We can fill outside medications, but they have to have a visit with Marathon Health first because our provider is putting that on their license. So we look to have at least one appointment with them to be able to do that as well.
Would it be x-ray services or no?
No x-ray today. We have a very small subset of clients that do x-rays. It's high cost, as you can imagine, and we personally have had real success finding partners in the community that we can build a relationship with and say, hey, when we have X, Y, or Z, let's get a direct contracting, preferred pricing, preferred scheduling in place. And we see a lot of success with that. Brings the investment off the district in the front end, as you can imagine. Since, hopefully this never happens, but 10 years from now, you could say, hey, Marathon Health, you're out, someone else is in. Everything that's in the clinic is the districts to have. And so it's an investment that you would be making, a large one at that with the equipment, with the staff, with the upkeep. And so we, you know, have looked to do that partnership as a result.
Okay. So is it staffed with ANRPs, physicians assistants, or what?
Yep. So the proposal is staffed with one advanced practice provider, which could be a nurse practitioner or a physician's assistant. In the state of Florida, we're able to staff either of those. And then two medical assistants to assist that provider as well. 40 hours to start and then we could grow and develop from there.
And also, do you, do, I see you have both mental health and general wellness, but it's part of a program that I think that we have in the school system is, you know, people, you know, a health-conscious, you know, lifestyle that, you know, there's available, you know, directional. Did y'all do that too? I mean...
So help me understand the program exactly.
And...
Just wellness service? Yeah, so, I mean, wellness is a core, so our providers are doing a lot of additional coaching. If you have programs in place that we could supplement, help refer to, things like that. If you have an incentive program, if they need to get physicals, biometric screenings, all of that, we can bring in the health center. Condition management, ongoing programming, if it's something our team would want to come in and we'd want to do a challenge, a walking challenge, things like that, we can support as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And from a mental health perspective, that is really our core from a provider standpoint. We don't have a behavioral health counselor or a psychiatrist in this proposal today, something that could be evaluated in the future, but the mental health from this provider standpoint is really that kind of first line of care, something called a PHQ2 and then a GAD screening. It's a baseline depression and anxiety screening. So it gives you the chance to get a baseline of where the patients are, how they respond to that helps the provider decide what the next step would be. Since they are licensed providers, they can do kind of basic treatment if there's a need for medication or things like that, or is there a referral necessary? Maybe you have any AP that they could go utilize or someone in the community. So that's what that kind of program is today.
Can you also have a, would be an in-office drug dispensary, I mean, for different, you know, they can, I mean, not narcotics, but things that, yeah.
Right, exactly. And we can do home delivery as well. So that's something, once a patient starts, I just use diabetes because it's an easy one to continue, starts on a diabetes medication, we can get them set up for 60, 90-day supplies back to home so they can keep on that medication. We often see where people fall off is when it's no longer as easily in front of them. So how can we get them on a plan and continue on that as well?
That's a good point.
How does that cost since you use diabetes and thank God I'm not diabetic, but the Metformin, I think it is? How does the cost of that compares with an outside? If I were to go outside of what the district is?
Yeah.
How do you establish the cost so that they can still afford it?
Yep.
But, you know, because I've gone myself to CVS and I've walked out and left the medication there because it was ridiculous.
Right.
Even with the copay.
Yeah. So there's a few different pieces at play here. If we can provide from our dispensary and delivery service, we are always providing that at a discount rate because we have direct relationships with our pharmacy provider. So they're able, you know, there's markups in the community anywhere you go. We're able to take that piece out of it and just bring that directly. If it's something we're not providing, all of our providers are still able to write to a CVS, to a Walgreens, to whatever, you know, your local pharmacy may be. I have myself, in a visit with a Marathon Health provider, had an outside script be ordered and the provider actually sat with me, showed me we use GoodRx or, you know, those script services that help you get a discount, walked me through what the price would be during the clinic visit, helped me get the coupon on so that when I showed up to the pharmacy, I both knew what the price was. And I was able to have that consultation in person. So if it was something that wasn't going to work for me personally, I could have that discussion and see what else we could do. With that more time with the provider, it gives us the chance to do that as well.
Sarah, I know we, excuse me, I'm sorry. Talking about wellness, I know right now we have a relationship with Quest. So will we continue that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So nothing would change as far, because I see you have onsite labs and testing.
Yep. So the ones that would go through, if you have a relationship with Quest, we can utilize Quest in health centers across the country. LabCorp and Quest, it's really location-based, what makes the most sense. So we would choose them as a partner as well. If you have, we would look into what's your pricing, what makes the most sense and where can we get the most bang for the buck to make sure we're capitalizing. We do have pretty darn good rates because we have such scope throughout the country that my hope would be we could even bring those down from what you're seeing today.
The chairman brought up a good point. The Metformin, I learned yesterday, I listened to NPR because I'm always trying to learn something. And they were discussing how the pharmacies can't keep the Metformin, the diabetic drugs because they're now using it for weight loss.
Yep.
Do y'all have that problem getting those drugs or?
We don't typically have stock-out problems. We're able to, where we can, carry generics and things in place of brand names, we do that as well. So we haven't typically had a ton of problem. We're also able to collaborate, so if it is, again, if something that has to go to the community, we have a team in place with time to do it that if they have to call two or three pharmacies to make sure it's in place, they're able to do so. We take really seriously what happens to the patient once they leave the four walls or figurative four walls of our health center. And so we want to make sure we're not sending someone to CVS that then they're standing there for an hour and turns out that it's not there. So I haven't heard of any specific issues we've had with that, but it's something we're tracking regularly. We have what we call a pharmacy and therapeutics committee that's looking at those exact people much smarter than I that have pharmacy degrees and things like that, that look at that stuff on a regular basis to say, what do we need to have in place? Because in one month, two months, three months from now, it could be something that we're seeing.
And you wouldn't prescribe Metformin for weight loss?
No, no, no.
Yeah, I mean, that, I guess that's the other thing. I'm just curious, just, I was flabbergasted what they, I mean, it was, it's a serious problem.
Yeah, our providers are really looking at what are the approvals in place for today and that's what the medication can be used by. GLP-1s are on everyone's mind. We have a team evaluating how we support our clients and that, and that's a whole another rabbit hole we can go down, but, you know, those sort of things, they're prescribing in line with what the prescription is meant for.
But knowing that you could even deliver.
Yeah.
That, that would be a blessing to some that, you know, maybe bedridden and there's no way to get there. So you all will actually make sure that that medication is delivered.
Yep.
Do you do one-month supply, ninety days?
Yep. Just based on what the prescription would be and what they would need, how often they need to be visiting with their provider as a result, all those things would be taken care of during the visit. We do have a patient portal as a part of our offering embedded in. We will always have phone numbers. Not everyone ever wants to use the app or the portal, so that will always be available. But if someone wants to go in and request a refill as well, they can do that. They can communicate with their provider. So if something comes up and they don't want to go in for a visit quite yet, they can do that as well. Also, all of our team will be virtually enabled, telephonically and virtually. So sometimes for a med checkup, it makes sense, they don't necessarily have to come back in. It's more of a, how are things going, how are you feeling? They're able to do that as well. So if it doesn't fit with their schedule to go to the clinic that day, they can do a phone call as well.
A little while ago, you mentioned forty hours. How, I mean, I'm sure times haven't been set, but if it's forty hours in a week, like what would you think?
Yeah.
How would that work?
So we design based on what we would collaborate on. Typically, we'll look to stagger the schedule. So we would start maybe two days a week, seven AM and go, you know, seven to four. And then maybe two other days we would do ten to seven. And then the last day we would do whatever makes the most sense. We can alter that a little bit. So we need to get a schedule in place off the bat. Nothing, to your point, has been decided yet. We ultimately, at the end of the day, we want to do what's right for your group. And we have groups that do all different hours, depending on what makes the most sense. We like to get it in place for a few months. Let's test it out, let's see where people are engaging, and then we can pivot from there a little bit. Maybe no one's coming in after six PM. So maybe we pull back a little and never go later than that as well.
Maybe no one's coming in during the day when they're at work, but they need to come in in the evening. I mean, if teachers in our high schools are not getting off of work until four, then evenings
Exactly.
might be a lot more beneficial, especially if you were driving, which everyone drives a good distance in this county, so that's.
Exactly, and that's something, you know, we would, that's one of the first discussions I would have. Because when we recruit a provider to come be in the space, they're going to ask, what's the schedule? At the end of the day, it's going to be ten times better than typically what they're seeing in the community. So we don't typically have any issue with whatever we have. But it's helpful, you know, people have families just like everyone else, they want to be able to plan around that. So that's one of the first discussions we'll have. Hey, what should we start with? Here's what maybe a SCMB is doing, here's maybe what St. John's. Do any of these feel right today? And then let's set a commitment to revisit this in three months and six months. And see, we have our tracking. So to Andy's point about data, ultimately, all of our decisions that we help make alongside of you should be data-driven. And so our software is hooked up to our reporting. So it'll show a heat map, if you will, of appointments by day and by hour of the day. So we can start to really get a feel for Tuesday mornings, Thursday evenings, Friday, whatever that may look like, are really, really heavy. It also gives us a chance to say, hey, at two PM, we usually have some slots. How can we be reaching out to maybe spouses? How can we be reaching out maybe to individuals that might have availability at that time? And we have the ability to do that as well. So we can start to drive engagement at different times.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Right now in Placca, Putnam County, I don't think we have an urgent care facility that operates past nine PM. I believe that's the case. I believe after nine, the only option that exists is the hospital emergency room. So do you attempt to in any way contract with or deal with, like for instance, HCA? For, to address members of your group that require services in those hours between nine and, or the hours that you don't operate?
Yeah. So we have embedded in our system a nurse triage line. And so if someone would call the health center after, or, you know, in their portal, it would have this information as well, after the hours of operation, they would get a registered nurse on the phone. They go through and triage what's going on and help to understand, is this something that needs to be seen tonight? Or is this something that we can get you scheduled to go first thing in the morning? So that's, you know, that's what we typically use to approach because a lot of needs can be seen in the morning. If you're having chest pain, if you're having, you know, those sort of things, let's get you to the hospital right away.
Is that the option then? If you triage and the answer is, we got to be, this person has to be seen now, you send them to the hospital?
We'll get them with whatever makes, if there's no urgent cares, the hospital is probably the only other option. Our team collects that information. So as a part of our services, we have a centralized referral team that's embedded. Centralized, I say generally, they work virtually. But they help the patient get care outside. So they're collecting a lot of data, both what's here in Placca and around, for all sorts of services. That includes after-hours. So we would have a good handle on what are the options and where should we be sending people when that happens.
And my question was, assuming that you do have a need that has to be satisfied that night or early in the morning or whatever, do you attempt to engage in any kind of contract with the only provider that's around here right now, which is the hospital emergency room?
Yeah. I can check if we have any today. Typically, emergency rooms aren't looking for contracted relationships because they know they're the option. But we want to make it as seamless as possible for our patients wherever. So if it's something that hospital system will be open to, you know, it's absolutely something that we would look to do.
That's not norm, those what you're telling me.
No, not specifically. We do see, we have seen that after nine PM, many needs can wait until the morning. That's why we have the nurse triage in place because oftentimes it's a fear-based. And, you know, especially if a kid's involved or something like that, you don't blame anyone for being nervous about, here's what's happening, I want to get care right now. But with the nurse there, they're able to do that triage and help them make sure if the hospital's right, the hospital's right. If not, let's get this, you set up so that you can be seen immediately by the Marathon Health provider.
So in that event, if the hospital charges, and I don't mean to dominate.
No, no.
No, these are things need to be.
Absolutely.
I guess, I was born to ask questions. In that event, then, other components of the insurance would
Right.
kick in to handle the?
They would be covered by, one of our hired doctors.
Exactly.
Like the ambulance ride that night that we're talking about that happens and it can't wait until in the morning.
Right.
That ambulance ride, how does that play in cost-wise? Because that ride is not cheap.
Yes, exactly. That would all fall under your traditional health insurance plan. So whatever the pre-negotiated with the health insurance, that would all apply. Yep.
By the way, we have Richard Frederick here from our carrier.
Yeah.
That, if there's any questions about that. Thank you, Richard, for being here. Feel free to come up if you will.
There's no conflict at all with anything that Sarah has said. In case you don't understand, Marathon is not trying to replace the services that Florida Blue contractually provides. They're not trying to contract with every provider that Florida Blue contracts with. You know, under Blue Options, your group plans. The Blue Options network is the largest provider of doctors and hospitals in the state of Florida. Now, we're not responsible as your agency for bringing the Marathon solution to you, but we wholeheartedly agree that this can provide an additional level of benefit to your employees. And not only, if a clinic is done well, not only does it increase employee satisfaction and access to care because there are not enough primary care doctors in Putnam County.
There are not.
Not only does it increase their access to it, it has the ability to save the district money on the expenses. So now that you are self-insured, if you can handle that need and that expense in a local clinic with people who are building a relationship with your employees, you're going to do better than a fee-for-service arrangement with this provider here, that provider there, that provider there. Does that make it a little clearer?
Well, to, back to what Don said about contracting with the emergency rooms and things like that. It's not, it's just, it's no secret, but we have had employees and employed lose their life before because we didn't have a clinic or somewhere they felt comfortable to go. And, you know, he was a relatively young man, I won't call any names, but he was having bad abdominal pains and worked all day and didn't feel like he could afford to go to the emergency room and wound up with a strangulated intestine and burst and he died in about ten minutes. So my concern is that we find the absolute best we can for the employees. And I think our team has really tried to bring this to us at the best possible rate and try to, you know, improve our quality of life and help our employees live, you know. We're, I guess we're the largest employer in the county and unless something's changed. So we've got a lot of people depending on what we do collectively to try to provide, to meet the needs of their families. I just, I've seen that and I could go on with other situations where we've lost people for a reason that was just needless, you know. And hopefully this will help us avoid anything like that.
So to, kind of, on that, one of our employees that maybe can't afford family coverage would, could they opt into the clinic? Could a spouse that's not on our insurance be seen at the clinic?
Yes. So we say eligibility is determined by our employer partners. So if you say all members have access to the clinic, all we do is absorb the eligibility file that has all of those people listed. So we, whatever that determination is, that's what we say is eligible to utilize the health center.
And it's at a cost to our employee, like there's, explain that, please.
That's been a priority
Yes.
of ours internally in the insurance committee. And we thought, we heard that clearly communicated from the board, that we come up with a different solution for our employees who have families that can't afford the family plan and option for them to be able to go to the doctor at a much reduced cost. So we will be definitely building that in.
Yep.
Good.
Except don't have to develop another plan that gets a little clearer on what the expectations are.
Yep. And, you know, ultimately, what we're doing is we're, we build a staffing model based on assumed engagement. So as we grow and build together, you know, a year from now, two years from now, we may, you know, be having the conversation to add another provider. That's a really good problem to have, that means people are utilizing it and coming to the health center. We didn't want to build a proposal that had all of these staff that potentially would go unused at the beginning. Things do take a moment to ramp and get growing. And also get a handle on the amount of members, you know, outside of the plan today that would look to utilize the health center. So all we're, we are constantly tracking, how many people are appearing on that file? How many people are coming in? And how are we growing that out? Our team is looking at those numbers monthly, talking to Andy and Thomas and the team about that. And we're tracking that in advance. Because the worst problem we can have is your patients trying to come in the door and we don't have availability. We will hear about it, you will hear about it, and we don't want that to be a result. So we're tracking that in advance to make sure we're having that conversation early. Hey, we're probably six months away from needing that provider. How do you feel about us starting to recruit for that and see if we could get that added in as well?
I said I have a lot of questions, I don't always have a lot of questions, so. So the term of the relationship with Marathon would be what? Length? Is it a contract, Andy?
Yes.
And what's the term?
So we typically do five years. If it needs to be a little less, we can look at that as well. We, you know, at minimum three, just because our providers are looking for a commitment. If they're leaving an existing employer, right, they want to make sure that their job won't be gone tomorrow.
So you indicated that Marathon is, holds itself out to both private employers and groups?
Right.
What would, what would the district's options be? Or would the district have any right of consultation? Let's say that the city of Placca decided they wanted your services as well.
Right.
Would the school district have any right to discuss that option with you? And whether or not adding another large group with degraded services that you could provide to the district?
So this health center is only for the district employees. If there would be a future state that you'd say, hey, we want to open it up to someone else, we can have that discussion at that time. But right now, this is only built with the county, the schools in mind. Other employers could do their own thing with Marathon and that could be entirely separate. But there is no one that would be coming in and taking access. Yeah.
For that kid that gets hurt at PE
Yeah.
in school and his parents, they are employees and they're members. That child can come to that clinic and get stitched though.
So if they're under twelve, they would have to have their parent with them. But if their parent is employed by the district, they can utilize it, yes.
Okay, so they would come in?
As a minor, they have.
Pass or the stitches?
Yes, they could get looked at, yeah. But they would need a parent.
Right, right.
Twelve or under, so it's a good call out. I did not cover this in general. So scope of service starts at two plus for acute care. So bumps, scrapes, bruises, sore throats, flu shots, those sort of things. At age twelve, we start to view the patient as a, getting out of that kind of pediatric zone for preventive care. And we could start to see them for more physicals, things like that. But we firmly believe in a pediatric relationship. Most people, if there's anything families are doing, they're making sure their kiddo has a pediatrician, even if it's at the cost of themselves. And so we look to keep that relationship in place. But when an emergent need comes up for a kid, typically it's the hardest time to get in, to see that pediatrician. So we're seeing them for all those sort of things. Sport and camp physicals, we can see kids for as well. So, you know, they come in in the summertime, have to get that before they can go play soccer, whatever that may be. We can do that as well.
How about like athletic physicals?
Yeah, so sport and camp for kiddos, we can do.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
I'm sure my parents would have loved it when I was a kid.
And so you all, Marathon?
Yes.
You all, that's, so Marathon then takes care of the hiring and dismissing of the provider, I mean, of the ones that will take care, excuse me, the clients, our patients?
Yep, so our, the clinical staff would be employees of Marathon Health.
Okay. You all handle that?
Exactly. We'll collaborate, especially with the provider. That is really, really important to get someone in place that fits for the district very well. So we would give the chance for your team to interview, kind of maybe the last two, last three leading candidates because we want that feedback in place. We, you know, our, I believe off the top of my head, our provider tenure, the turnover's about, or the retention, excuse me, is about ninety-six percent, ninety-seven percent. We want our providers to get in and want to stay. You know, people that are taken care of, take better care of your people as a result. And so, you know, we'll take care of all that. We have a talent team, especially in the state of Florida, we have a lot of experience recruiting. So they're ready to hit the ground running and get some candidates in the door to make sure we have a really strong clinical staff. But management of that, it does not fall on the district, none of that clinical oversight. We manage all of those things. Other questions? I did quickly, I didn't put a slide in, but I wanted to mention, you know, we've talked about a lot of things and I think it's really important to note that this does not fall on the district of all this work. Your team has done a ton of work on the front end to find a partner. We're excited to be the one that they're recommending. But it's our job now to pick up the ball and move it forward. You'll have an account team in place, local here to the state of Florida. Tiffany Cumbie leads that team here in Florida, she lives in Lakeland. And she has a team all throughout the state to help manage each client individually. You'd have one point of contact to make sure everything gets off the ground. We have a whole implementation team in place to both help get the health center built and ready and then also get the staff in place and everything ready to go. So in January of next year, we're ready to see patients. Of course, we'll have different team members that'll plug in for their kind of various needs. But this is not something that will become, you know, the district members' jobs. You guys all have full-time jobs, this is our job to go do this now. Other questions? I included this one in here. You know, I think it's important, we can talk about services, we can talk about all these different pieces, but at the end of the day, the human aspect is really important here. I know we've talked about it quite a bit, but if patients aren't having a good experience, you know, the rest is kind of for nothing at that point. We need to make sure that they trust us, that they're coming in the door. So we survey patients after each visit. They get a survey that says, how was your interaction? Would you recommend Marathon Health to a friend or coworker? And then any kind of open quote area, if you will, for what their experience provides. So I just grabbed a few from the local schools here in Florida, some experiences that they had. But that's something we're including in our reporting package for the district as well. So you're seeing all of the results that patients are providing back to us. The good, the bad, the ugly. Hopefully, very, very little ugly. Oftentimes, if we get a, or all the time when we get a negative review, if you will, our service recovery team will reach out to that patient and follow up and say, hey, you know, I saw you didn't have a great experience at the health center. Help me understand so we can improve. That way, we can get a better understanding of, was it a clinical problem? Is something happening with the provider that may be out of line or out of place there? Is it a problem with maybe expectations? Are we not communicating in a way in our materials that someone walked in and understood what was going to be happening? Or was it something, sometimes people just have bad days? And oftentimes, patients will tell us, hey, you know, that just really wasn't a good day for me. And so while my review wasn't great, And so while my review wasn't great, it doesn't necessarily mean your team did anything wrong. But we want to make sure we're working through all that so that as a result, our team can act if something needs to be done. And then lastly, we've talked through most of these things, but to the earlier point about insurance, we're not billing insurance, we're not billing, you know, patients at a fee-for-service sort of basis like the community does. This is a capitated fixed fee program. You're making an investment in Marathon Health and you get all of these things. So no one's going to be getting bills in the mail as a patient, as a result of a visit or anything like that. All of the recruit, or yeah, recruiting, reporting, analytics, everything happening in the health center is included in that fixed fee. The only time a patient may have to pay anything out of pocket with an HSA plan, the IRS requires a fair market value charge, it's just mandated by the government. Fair market value can mean a lot of things. And our attorney would tell me not to advise you on what exactly that is, but I can tell you our experiences, that's the only time a patient has to pay anything out of pocket. So they come in the health center and they can receive care for free for them. To your, to your point, we never want anyone, at least for that first initial point of care, for the reason they don't come in to be priced. Obviously, if it's something that has to go out the, outside of the health center, we're then doing everything we can to make sure we're sending them to the highest quality with the most cost-effective care as well. We utilize a resource called Garner Health to do that. It's just an analytics machine that spits out, Dr. X is doing these services and they charge on average X, Y, and Z. We can compare those so we know where we're sending the patient and what their potential cost to them in the plan could be.
So, back of a minute, if you don't mind?
Yeah, of course.
So you're, you're saying, did I, do I understand you to say that if a patient received care, then that patient might have to report the value of that care on his income tax return?
No, no, I'm sorry. You have an HSA plan, a self-insured, high deductible plan. As a part of that with an HSA, because you're able to put pre-tax dollars into that HSA, we, for non-preventive services, are required to charge some sort of fair market, or you as a, as an employer, have to charge some fair market value cost. Usually around $20 or so if they come in for a non-preventive service. They can use the HSA card, they can use credit card, they can use checks, things like that to pay for that. That's not something that's reported on the backend, it's at point of service within the health center. Yeah.
Sarah, also, it's my understanding that employees need to opt in to be, for this?
No, so this will be offered regardless of their status, if you will, unless, the decision would be for a non-employee or a non-health plan would have to enroll. We can look through what that process would look like. But this is available regardless of their opting in or not.
Okay.
So they will have access, once they're on the eligibility file, they'll get a portal account, they'll get communication outreach, all those things.
But they would need to be a part of our insurance, is that correct?
No, that any employee that's determined as eligible, or excuse me, any member that is determined as eligible by the district can access. So that can be all spouses, all dependents, all employees, regardless of health insurance status.
Help me understand, any member of?
The district.
The district, so any district employee?
Correct.
Okay.
Or dependent.
Or dependent.
If that's what, if that's what you all decide. Fine member.
Correct. As long as their parent is working for the district and associated with that.
Cause I think that's a little different from what we heard from a previous organization. So I just want to clarify that. Cause originally, they had to be, had to have our insurance and opt in, but that is not the case here.
No.
Okay, that's-
And that's just some of the things too. We bring our plans to you in November that will have specific set, because obviously we want to be good stewards of that insurance fund. It's going to be funding everything that could, we have batted around some small charges for some employees, you know, maybe each employees that weren't in our healthcare plans just made. So there is some of that we've talked about, but we want to make sure, like I said, all this money is coming from the insurance fund. We want to make sure that money is always there. We've done a lot of things to safeguard that and bring our expenses down, drive our employees into Marathon. It's going to bring those expenses down as well because we've been going through a clinic provider, so we'll-
Exactly.
Real hard specifics on those plans.
I think Paul?
I think we would probably want to go with the insurance members first and kind of see how the response is and if it's a huge response, then, you know, we might have to back up and pump whenever it comes to, you know, if they can handle the amount of people. I guess my, my deal would be we want to crawl before we can walk, we want to phase it in, if you will. Now, I think that, in my mind, we probably would want to go with people that are on the insurance plan and be a forever member on the insurance plan. And then we could, you know, with the insurance committee and your approval, that we could go, you know, branch out if we had, you know, that they had the time and the space for it.
Is that going to be in the insurance committee's recommendation, Andy? What, what Paul's saying?
Back to the one going- Right now, we want, yeah, right now, we want to get a clinic in place.
Right.
Like I said, there'll be a process, we'll have to build it out, because Paul brings up a good point. Cause we start off initially, it would be a bad thing to have a flood of business that we couldn't handle.
Okay.
That, that answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, but wouldn't, Chairman?
Yes.
So that kind of is contrary to helping our employees that can't afford the, the health plan, the health plan, and the fact that those that have the health plan can go to a doctor or, you know, I mean, have other options for medical treatment where these others don't. So, you know, to me, and I don't know if that's what the superintendent was kind of getting at, it's, it'd be, my thoughts were that it would include any employee, whether they were on, on the insurance plan or not. Now, the employees, you know, dependents might be a different story, you know, but at least the employee would have that, that op, that we would, they would all be included to start with. Does that make sense?
Well, it makes perfect sense to me. And one of the reasons that we went with Marathon is because we make those decisions accordingly.
Right.
And, and I think the board has done a good job of communicating their desire to have options for pretty much all of our employees and beyond that, their, their-
Figure that out.
Their children as well. So we need to flesh that out internally in our insurance committee. But at the end of the day, we don't want to lose money either.
Right.
We don't start hemorrhaging money, we don't want to do anything we can't afford. So those will be conversations we'll have internally and continue to have, but, but it's, it's up to us.
Right.
Right.
And I would think you would have some data or some past experiences on, hey, what's, like Paul said, what's a good starting point?
Exactly.
Or if we did all of our employees?
Right.
Is there anything you would advise us?
Right.
Pro or con on that?
Yeah, you know, and we, we do have employers that do the whole gamut of eligibility. I would say most commonly, it's either just those on the insurance plan or all employees plus covered spouses and dependents. Just from a financial standpoint, since you're paying for them on the insurance side. But again, we can help to work through all the different scenarios to see what kind of triggers. The good news is, this doesn't have to be a forever decision either. It's really easy to add something, harder to take it away, obviously. So, you know, if, if you wanted to start somewhere and say, once we got this up and running, six months in, maybe it's a good time to phase in additional dependents or something like that. We have the ability to do that as well, to make sure.
Also the ability to make it, don't jump to this, to the conclusion of this, but do you also have the ability to make it a small fee-based service?
Yes.
So you could avoid depleting that fund that's been referenced?
Yep.
But you could make the amount of the cost still very manageable compared to the cost of the insurance premium?
Exactly. And that's something that we would pass back to the district. So let's say you decided a non-insurance enrolled individual would have a $30 visit charge for what it, whatever that may be. That $30 would be a credit on the next bill. So we're not collecting that and keeping that, we're passing that back to the district as a credit each month. So we could absolutely do that. It's, the world is your oyster on how we set it up. We just have to set up the file so we know what patient is what when they come in the door. But we can absolutely, and like I said, decision doesn't have to be final on day one on what you're doing. Put adding, people get excited when things get added, people get not so excited when things get taken away, so.
So Andy, going back to your, what you said, really, the, the decision the board will make is to do it or not, and then all these other decisions can be made later.
Yeah, like I said, it'll be a building process and there will be a, and we'll make changes as we go. We know that's going to happen.
And from a timeline perspective, the build-out is what takes the longest time. The six months is to get the space really ready and in clinical form to make sure we can get individuals in the door. These other decisions have a little bit of time to make sure everyone feels really good about the decision that's being made. So that doesn't have to be decided, you know, right when build-out begins. That's, you know, as I'm sure you can imagine, especially these days, building out takes a little bit longer to make sure the clinic's ready.
And so the, you know, looking at the, the school districts that you currently have, you know, a contract with or work with, you know, they're all either large or, you know, pretty large-
Yep.
-school districts. And, you know, but Indian River probably be close to our, the closest to our student population and, or, or, yeah, employee population, excuse me. So I think you, we might be able to get some data-
Yeah.
-from that a little quicker.
Absolutely.
To help us as we move through the process to the January 25 target date, correct?
Exactly. And outside of the state of Florida, we even have more clients that are more in that mid-size range. We do happen to have very large school districts in Florida, but we do have some, you know, in Illinois, in Kansas, Ohio, other places that have a very similar size to Putnam.
And the, and the, the cost of healthcare is not, you know, and the problems that we face is not an anomaly just to Putnam County.
No.
It's every district and, and government agency in the state.
Yep.
You know, and, you know, it's, anyway.
Yes. Unfortunately, it's not even just the state of Florida as well, so, yeah. What other questions? What have I not? Andy, Thomas, Paul, team, what did I miss from what we've talked about?
Sarah, how the employees have their visit, can you give a take that?
Yes, yeah, I, I did, okay, I'm like, did I? Yes. Yeah.
That's just important to us, because we, as a committee, we wanted to hear that feedback to see what we can do.
Exactly. Yeah.
Well, I appreciate the work of the committee. Thank you very much.
Definitely.
Something we've been looking forward to for a long time.
And pre-existing conditions, that's okay.
Yeah. There's no limit or limitation or anything like that put in place. We're trying to collect as much data on the patients as possible, so we'll get information from your health plan, get information from the health information system, that's all the community providers, and bring that all into our data so that our providers can see as much information on the patient as possible. And so they can help, you know, I think the stat is something like 30% of referrals are wasted or unnecessary referrals. Since we're an independent provider, our, our teams aren't incentivized or asked to refer any specific place for any specific reason. So we're an advocate of the patient. Sometimes that means working through with them within the health center rather than going to see a specialist. Specialists will always be needed. We will never be hiring, I guess never, say never, but we're not hiring neurologists, we're not hiring orthopedic surgeons, those sort of things. But when someone comes in with low back pain, let's maybe work through some things before they go to an orthopedist, because typically the next thing is surgery then. How can we see, are they overweight? Are they in a stagnant lifestyle? Are they not walking as much? Those sort of things. How can we help the patient try a few steps? Even get them referred to physical therapy, some of those pieces, so that they're trying different things before it turns into a surgical need.
I really like the idea, a couple of things, and I think Andy talked about it, is just in our recruiting for employees, potential employees to know that we have this service available, to me, is tremendous. And then also, you know, the other option I know is partnering with another entity. I like the idea that this is ours.
Yep.
That we can, you know, tailor it to our hours or our employees' needs and, and really our employees have specific needs that maybe another entity does not, so.
Exactly.
Nothing against another entity.
No, no.
But I think there's a lot of value here.
And that's, that's our goal, is for this to be personalized for the district. And that can mean a lot of different things, scope, provider, hours of operation, all sorts of things, to make sure it's most fitting, to capture as many individuals as possible.
You're going to have a whole lot of data on people.
Mm-hmm.
How are you safeguarding it?
Yes.
I mean, there are hackers out there, just-
Yep.
When people will hack a funeral home.
Yep.
I mean, they, yes, Black Lives Matter, they got their stuff held up and, and people's information is on there.
Yep.
You know, I know, because we aren't your first rodeo.
Yeah.
So what do you, you all have in place?
Exactly. So, you know, at the base level, we're HIPAA compliant, of course, so no patient information is ever getting sent anywhere. Any of the data we're getting from you, you know, from a patient information perspective is all sent via secure file, so it's never living locally on any system or being sent via email or anything like that. You know, we're making sure that the patient is protected in all those ways, we're never sending information. All of our providers, we call FIN clients, so their computers stay at the health center, no one's bringing a laptop home or any of those sort of things, so everything is staying at the health center. So that that secure space is that secure space and all the patient information stays there. We bring in all of the technology, so the phone lines, the internet, all of that, so it's just centralized for that need. So everything's really staying in that, there's no paper charting, everything is digital so that we have all that information captured securely in that space. We utilize a health system, a health insurance system, excuse me, EMR, that's making sure all of that information is, is kept safely in there. We take that incredibly seriously, yeah. Because we're getting social security numbers, we're getting all of that, yes. Needless to say, Sarah has access to none of those things and only the people that must have access to that.
Do we have a proposed location or?
They'll mostly, the training center.
Yes, that's perfect.
Excellent.
That's perfect.
And a lot of parking space.
Lot of parking.
It's nice.
We'll pay for parking lots.
It's really, yeah, that's a great location.
And I think if anybody says, why, why don't we offer it to South and, South Putnam, West Putnam, and that could be in the future, but I think somebody said before, usually when people go to their doctor, they're coming to town anyway.
Right.
You know, so it's not like-
Free helps also. So like, free, a free service may make someone drive five or 10 more minutes, 15 more minutes, whatever that may be, than something close. And we've talked a lot about that of, that's why we didn't want to build this huge proposal all around town. There's always the option to have a smaller center somewhere else, an additional location, you know.
And you do telemedicine, correct?
Yes, yeah.
And we did pull that on employees' addresses and where they lived at, we made the decision to put it in the central.
Well, to Rick's comment, you know, you got to start somewhere. I've, I've been through this before. And I had a friend of mine's dad that used to always say, a bad start's better than no start. But we're going to try to have a good start and we're going to get started and down the road, that may be an option.
Sure.
And there may be like Dawn asked our attorney, you know, other entities, that may happen over time, you know, to a future board or whatever, so we'll see, we'll see what.
I think another unintended benefit might be, you know, having people on the job more by taking care of maybe something small, early. by taking care of maybe something small early.
Right.
Doesn't turn into a major sickness.
Yep.
And really benefit the district by not having to pay subs or whatever, so.
Right, absenteeism and.
Or a big claim.
Sir?
Or a big claim.
Or a big claim, exactly, yep.
Yeah, absolutely. And the good news is, you know, we, with your team making this decision early and having some lead time, we have a lot of chance to really build some energy and excitement around this. So to your point, we, we, we won't be perfect necessarily on day one. We'll do our best to be as close to it. But how do we make sure individuals know this great offering that's being brought to them? And so that, you know, start off the year really strong and, and excited to do it. So and January is a great time with schools, we see, not right at the beginning of the school year when things are a little crazy, things are always a little crazy. But, you know, when they have a little bit of time coming back from the holidays and, and able to do that as well.
That's great.
Very good.
Thanks.
All right, are we, any further questions, discussion, comments?
Sarah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all one of the contracts, seems to be.
Yeah, yes.
Can we have that?
I have asked my team tomorrow if we can get it then. So yeah, they're working on it. I had a phone call on the way down here, so they are working on getting the contract with the information, all the correct stuff in there as soon as possible.
So we can have that, have that in, like, board docs, Andy, or have, how's that going to be available?
Sir, I'm sorry.
How will the contract be made available?
It'll be on board docs.
On board docs, okay. Okay.
Yeah, as soon as Shannon and I get that from our legal team, we'll be sure to get it over to you guys.
Definitely.
Get it to our attorney.
I'm, you.
Adam, if it would be helpful as well, you know, the, our standard terms as it relates to the medical care and things like that, we have a sample. It won't, very far from that, it's just getting your actual information in there. We can share that as well as a start if it'd be helpful, but we'll have the actual contract as soon as possible.
Yeah, and one thing that, that actually resonated with me, and, and I guess that's why, you know, the one, two, three, five-year commitment wasn't that big of a deal. Nancy Weber from St. John's County, she used to be their chief negotiator. I think she's like assistant finance director or something now. But she said it hit an RFP when your contract was up for renewal. And, and someone else came in less expensive. However, the members overwhelmingly wanted to retain Verifond. They did not want to change even with that loop, you know.
Yeah.
Unless it costs, so.
Yeah.
That just spoke volumes for me.
Yeah, and that's, you know, St. John started with a different partner and we, you know, took that business, I think back in 2014 or so. I don't recall the exact date. May have been a little later than that. But, you know, they started with someone else. We were able to come in and retain that. Like I said, we, we really want to be long-term partners. We can make long-term, especially when you have individuals that stay with the district for a long time, how, how can we help be their continuum of care for, for that duration? And be able to continue to provide that for them as well, so. And if there's anyone else, you know, any questions, you guys know where to find me?
Thank you for coming down.
Mr. Burnett, we, you've been.
Thank you.
Excellent, uh, thank you.
Thank you for coming down from Atlanta, right?
Oh, I always look for an excuse to come down to Florida, so. If you guys need me any other time, I'm available. When you get an account team, if you need to request me for your implementation, you let me know.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, guys, thank you. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me to join, and we, we look forward to exceeding your expectations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you adjourn, I just need to hand out something to the board and mention something.
Okay.
Could I do that?
I, I got, I don't know.
Yeah, can you take one too?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
And if you'll hang on to one for Linda, I won't.
You want it?
Just put it, I'll just put it in the thing.
Board, and again, I, I don't want to belabor this or, or really have any discussion. I just want to provide this with you, for you, based on board member Leary's questions and comments last meeting. Since then, I've contacted, or actually met with the director and assistant director in NEFAK, and I asked them to provide a summary of their services and everything that was requested. So between now and maybe the board meeting, if you would like to just review this and, you know, we, and actually, their assistant director will be at the board meeting if there's any questions. And if there's anyone individually who wanted to meet with them prior to that, I did contact them and they are available to meet, if you'd like to do that. But this is the first step, just to provide the information that you requested.
I thought we were going to go out there and meet with them. I thought that was what the board wanted to do. I mean, I'm, this is great information.
Yeah, and, and that's why I'm saying, if you wanted to meet with them, they, if you want to meet with them before the board meeting.
Yeah.
Of course, this is not, nothing being voted on this Tuesday, but I'm just saying, they are available Monday and early Tuesday. Once you got this, I want you to have this in your hand. If you wanted to meet with them, I'd be more than happy to make that happen.
Okay, so, and I, I look at this much closer, and maybe in your discussions with them, do each of the other, how many, there's 15 total, right? So the other 14 districts, do they pay a proportionate amount to NEFAK to pay us to do all the indirect costs that we have, or?
That I need to check on, I know that, you know, there's a, there's a cost, but I need to, that would, that's something I would need to ask them.
Shouldn't, shouldn't we advertise and, and do this in the next meeting instead of talking about it in the, this insurance committee meeting, Dawn? I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, it's not an agenda item, so you can't take any action on it. But I don't think that a little bit of discussion is.
Okay. Just making sure, I didn't want to say anything.
Again, Phil or any, any board member, if you'd like to meet with them prior to the board meeting or anytime after that, just let me know and I can make a phone call. Be happy to do that.
Well, let me finish.
Phil, just let me know if you wanted, if you guys are.
I do want to go out there and talk to them, yeah. I mean, I just want, you know, clarification, I, I, I don't doubt that it's, um, I understand all the others are small, predominantly rural districts too, and they, just like us, have financial issues. I just want to make sure that everybody's got skin in the game, so. And, and also, if y'all haven't seen the email, Rhonda distance the email with the, the budget, the director, the department directors, you know, request. So I'm, I'm going to look at that. And, you know, we may need to do one more budget workshop before the, I mean, we're going to set the millage rate, which I think, you know, would be pretty simple because I don't think it, I don't want to go up on it. But, you know, maybe do a workshop somewhere in August, you know, just to brief one on the budget and make sure that we're all on the same page and, you know, before we go to the final hearings, just to make sure that there's, there's no.
Should they make that request during, at the board meeting, or is that, if they were? If they wanted to have that additional workshop, should they wait till the board meeting to make that request?
I, I don't think this, I don't think it matters, I think.
Because we on the 24th?
Right, we have the.
You have to advertise it for them. So you have to have your advertising timeframe.
And then you're talking one after that, okay, okay, I got you now.
There's, I mean, they'll be still doing a lot of work in finance and, you know, the whole process through the end of July, probably into the first August. And then, you know, but maybe we'll get to see. One thing that I'm, you know, static about is that the tax deed sales are going phenomenal. They're going to be doing two a month all the way through December. And the demand for, I mean, people are buying them like, you know, that, almost everything sells. That's why we did get a check for some additional money that, you know, Rhonda talked about. I think it was extra three, uh, an additional $3 million of tax revenue. Well, that was from those tax deed sales and.
Hadn't always been that way.
No, no, exactly. And, and in fact, I was talking for, for a client, I, I was actually working and talking with Rose at the tax collector's office. She was saying that, well, you can expect, you know, 10 people will bid on this, on this, on this tax. And I said, what? I mean, cause, you know, 10 years ago, nobody would have bid on it, and so.
It's hard to get a lot of code enforcement, you lean on the property and.
Right.
Nobody bids on it.
No, yeah, but anyway, so that's good news from the standpoint of being able to collect taxes that, that were due and that hopefully that'll be able to augment the budget some. I mean, I think there'll be another big check coming, you know, sometime after the next two tax, tax deeds.
If you're great, if, if that's something y'all would like, we'll have our CFO here at the board meeting and we could, you know, maybe find out a date and time. That would be.
Okay.
That's all right. And again, if any, if you, if you want to meet with NEFAK, just let me know specifically what your availability is and I can make a phone call.
Okay.
All right.
I've got just a general comment. I really, as a semi-outsider, think that the, the district was way ahead of the game in doing what you're doing with this option for some form of managed care component. If you've had any dealings with the healthcare system on behalf of a client or whatever,